Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the continuation of the April 15th, 2021 City of Portsmouth Planning Board Meeting. Today's date is Thursday, April 22nd. I'll read the COVID notice for New Hampshire RSA 91- A colon 2, item 3B. The Chair has declared the COVID-19 outbreak an emergency and has waived the requirement that a quorum be physically present at the meeting pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order 2020-04, Section 8, as extended by Executive Order 2021-01, an emergency order number 12, Section 3. Members will be participating remotely and will identify their location and any person present with them at that location. All votes will be by roll call. Ms. Walker, can we have a roll call attendance, please?
Vice Chair Moreau.
I am present at home in a room by myself.
Mr. Gamester.
Present at home with the family about.
Mr. Chellman.
Present at home alone on State Street.
Mr. Harris.
At home, present, alone in this room with my wife somewhere in the house.
Ms. Henkel.
I am alone at my house, but my cat is doing something in the other rooms if I run away, that's why.
Jay Manager Connard.
Evening, at my home, not alone, two family members elsewhere in the house.
Mr. Pizzullo.
Yes, present at the office at the Department of Public Works at Beverly Hill Road.
And Chairman Lake.
At home at four Muggs Terrace, I'm alone in the room, thank you. The first order of this evening's business is item 4, public hearings, new business, item A. The request of the Islamic Society of the Seacoast Area Owners for property located at 686 Maple Avenue for a second one-year extension of site plan review approval to construct a two-story building for religious assembly with a building footprint of 3,880 square feet and gross floor area of 5,333 square feet with related paving, lighting, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements that were originally granted on April 18th, 2019, and was granted an initial one-year extension on April 9th, 2020. Who is here to speak for this request?
The Chairman, members of the Planning Board, John Shagnon from AMBIT Engineering, representing the applicant on this request. The property is 686 Maplewood Avenue. The proposal is to construct a mosque, and you received approval in April of 2019 from the Planning Board. That approval was extended in 2020. The plans you had before you have been revised to address all the conditions that were included in your 2019 approval. My client is trying to get this started. He's been getting bids and getting funding sources to get the project moving. He anticipates getting that done this year, but he requests, or they request, a one-year extension. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but look forward to discussing this and possibly getting the extension tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Shagnon? Seeing none, John, thanks for that brief presentation. I will open it up now to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to or against this request, please raise your virtual hand. Third-time speakers? Seeing no hands, I'll close the public hearing. If I have a motion to vote, a motion to grant an additional one-year extension of site plan review approval as requested.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we vote to extend.
Duggan.
You have a motion in second discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the motion. Juliette, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Moreau.
Yes.
Mr. Gamester.
Yes.
Mr. Chellman.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Henkel.
Yes.
City Manager Connard.
Yes.
Mr. Pizzullo.
Yes.
And Chairman Lake.
Yes, motion passes eight to zero. Thanks, John.
Thank you, and thank you for coming back this week. I know you had a long one last time.
Our pleasure. Item B, the application of the Martha V Masilio revocable trust of 2004 owner for property located at 239 Gosport Road. Requested a wetland conditional use permit in accordance with Articles 10, Section 10.1017 of the zoning ordinance to permit after the fact yard disturbance, including grading and fill of approximately 4,790 square feet and the installation of 350 square feet of new impervious service in the surface in the wetland buffer. All work was completed by a prior owner. Said property is shown on assessor's map 224 lot 10-10 and lies within the single residence A district. Who is here to speak for this application? We can't hear you. Now we can.
Thank you. Brendan Quigley, I'm registered, a certified welland scientist in New Hampshire with Gulf Environmental Services. So we're here on behalf of Martha and Matt Masilio, the owners of the property at 239 Gosport Road. As your introduction revealed, this is an after-the-fact application for work that was conducted prior to their owning the property in 2016. The work that was conducted in the buffer was essentially expanding the rear yard of the house. The house is constructed in 2003, and sometime between 2005 and 2010, a previous owner had clear trees on the rear of the house and done some grading to level out an area which is now exists as lawn. The Masielos didn't learn of this until last summer, had no idea that this was done without a permit until they went to themselves, a building permit to conduct, to construct a pool in this area. After learning of the status of this area, they've undertaken the effort that we're here for tonight, which is in order to bring the property into compliance. Also, a corresponding application was submitted to the state of New Hampshire for the 100-foot buffer, title buffer impacts, and we've received approval for that. We've also met with the Conservation Commission, of course, who's recommended approval with certain stipulations relative to signage of the buffer area beyond the existing disturbance, as well as a commitment to adhere to certain organic yard maintenance practices in the sensitive area, as well as naturalization below the short retaining wall that exists at the edge of the lawn. And not being many more details to discuss, I'd gladly entertain any questions or go into any more detail of the impacts themselves or areas.
Questions for Mr. Quigley. Vice Chair Moreau.
Sorry, I was having trouble finding my button to get off mute. I'm just curious, so you said that they were moving forward or trying to get a permit to do a pool, so are they planning further renovations to this backyard beyond this at this point?
No, my understanding is that the process has been a bit daunting, and they really wish to bring the property into compliance, and I don't believe that they have any intentions of moving forward with any more work at this time. And I do see that Martha and Matt have joined us, and I see them shaking their heads in agreement with that.
Yeah, apologies, we're having technical problems, but Matt and Martha Masilio at 239 Gosport Road, and Brendan's correct, we have no interest in putting a pool, and we're really just trying to bring the property into compliance at this point.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I will open it up to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to or against this request for this application, please raise your virtual hand. Don't see anyone in that first round, second round, speakers? Third and final round? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the wish of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we vote to approve the wetland conditional use permit as presented with the included stipulations.
Motion is second discussion. Vice Chair Moreau.
I'll just briefly speak to the fact that, you know, disappointing when people certainly do things in the buffers without the permission to do so, but it's very nice when other people actually try to bring it compliance, and since it's already there, the damage is done, and we will now move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, I'd just like to echo that. I mean, obviously, this cost you a little money to make your, and it was a bit of a surprise, and so I appreciate you doing what you're doing to make sure that your, the record is clear, so thank you very much. Seeing no other comments, I'll call the motion. Ms. Walker, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Moreau.
Yes.
Mr. Gamester.
Yes.
Mr. Chellman.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, but I... Yes.
That was a yes? Okay. Ms. Henkel.
Yes.
City Manager Connard.
Yes.
Mr. Pizzullo.
Yes.
And Chairman Lake.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Take care. Item 5, City Council Referrals Public Hearing, item A. Request a talk, buckridge owner for the restoration of involuntary merged lots at 900 Middle Road. If I could have a motion to postpone the public hearing to the May Planning Board meeting?
Don't move. Don't move. Second.
Your motion is second. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Walker.
Vice Chair Moreau.
Yes.
Mr. Gamester.
Yes.
Mr. Clark. Sorry. Mr. Chellman.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Henkel.
Yes.
City Manager Connard.
Yes.
Mr. Pizzullo.
Yes.
And Chairman Lake.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Item 6, preliminary conceptual consultation. Request of Dagny Target LLC owner for property located at 93 Pleasant Street requesting preliminary conceptual consultation for proposed mixed-use development consisting of office space and 61 residential units that will involve renovation of the existing commercial building and new construction of a two-and-a-half-story building in the existing parking lot. The associated site improvements, said property shown in assessor's map 107 lot 74 and lies within the character district 4 district. And Mr. Chellman is recusing himself in this matter. Who is here to present this request?
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. I'm Mark McNabb. I'll try to start, and then I'll turn it over to some more people who are here on the team. As I mentioned, I'm Mark McNabb. I live at 51 Bay Cliff in Portsmouth, and I'm the owner of McNabb Properties in the subject parcel. I just wanted to start by explaining why I want to do this project. I want to create much-needed affordable housing for people who work downtown. You know, we can't expect people to work downtown without housing. It's really, it's really difficult to hire people. There's a lot of talk about affordable housing. I think a lot of people use that word loosely. I've been a real estate developer for 35 years in this area, and I've come to realize, at least from my own criteria, there's nine essential things I need for affordable housing. I think it personally applies to anybody to create affordable housing, and I just wanted to share that. I have to have municipal sewer, which this site has. I have to have municipal water, which this site has. I've got to have zoning that allows micro apartments, less than 500 square feet, without limitations on number of units per acre, which the site has. Apartments need to be located in an urban area or an easy walk or bike ride to a grocery store, a pharmacy, restaurants, hardware store, transportation, not far from medical. Private parking requirements as close to zero per unit as possible, and certainly not to exceed one car per three micro units of three units. This board has the ability to approve that. Private structured parking downtown costs between $50,000 and $100,000 a vehicle for all-in, land, soft cost, hard cost. I'm building a 60 Penhalla right now, 70 parking spaces, and I'm very aware of the cost. So when you spend that kind of money for a car, when it's a thousand-square-foot unit, you know, an apartment, it's not prohibitive. It's actually required for a larger unit. On a small micro apartment, it can be as much as three-quarters of the cost of the unit if you had required one car. So parking's really critical. The, I mean, less parking's really critical for micro and affordable housing. Fully furnished units, these will be fully furnished units, including everything, furniture, flat-screen TVs, appliances. Micro apartments only work if the furniture is designed and built, because small units, you just can't pile in furniture. It's got to be, you know, Murphy beds that fold up, rooms are recycled for multiple uses, so it's important that they're furnished so that they work as intended. No separate utilities. Utilities can be crazy. By the time you get Comcast and internet and electric and gas, and if you don't have a decent credit, you've got to put security deposits for them. So these units will be, all utilities will be included, the lobby house meters. Load and no upfront cash. These units will be if your employer does a payroll deduction for rent, we won't charge a security deposit. I found it's quite interesting that the larger impediment for affordable housing is the cash upfront. Second is rent. It's not uncommon at all to have to spend $3,000 to $5,000 for a typical apartment, one-month security deposit, one-month rent, four different utilities, security deposits, a moving truck, furniture. That's a barrier for affordable housing that we don't talk about much. One is rent, but the other is the amount of cash you've got to come up with. So our intent is to do these units with little to no cash. And then the last item, the ninth item, is you've got to have a developer willing to do, do it. It's less profitable. The most profitable thing I could do would be to give you one car per unit and do 20 or 25 million-dollar units and sell them. I have no desire in doing that. I wouldn't do that kind of a project. So you've got to have a developer willing to just do a much longer view. You know, these units, micro apartments, for anyone who asks, you know, how will they be affordable and remain affordable, I just have some interesting observations. You know, apartments, micro apartments are self-selected by size, really. All apartments are self-selected by size. A typical apartment that has amenities, including private bedrooms, multiple bathrooms, laundry room, separate rooms for each function, you know, of approximately 800 to 1,000 square feet in size, those kind of apartments which are all over the place and are not affordable. People who want those units, want those amenities, they want their private parking space, they're not going to rent micro apartments. Micro apartments do not have laundry in the unit, they don't have separate rooms. So the interesting thing about micro apartments is they're always micro apartments, they can't be what they're not, whereas a large apartment can be a condominium, it can be everything. So once you build a really tiny living space, but nicely done, in a brand-new building, the size of that unit is always going to require it to be at the lowest rent of housing stock in the local area. So that's why I'm doing it. I've got a lot of workers downtown, and I'm excited to try to do a project that can help a little bit, much smaller living units. It's the only way to get around property taxes and the capital cost of a unit. You've got to have 400 square-foot units. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the project architect from Procon, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Plan Board. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Crystal Zott, and I will be the project architect, like Mark mentioned. We appreciate the opportunity to present this project to you tonight, a project that we are very excited for, for a number of reasons. The project will provide, you know, affordable housing options, like Mark mentioned, human-scale character, walkability and connections in downtown, obviously, because the project is pretty much right downtown. It will revive an under-realized building and lot. These are themes that are also mentioned in the master plan, which I'll just touch on a little bit later, but first I wanted to give a little bit of history of the project, of the building itself. John, are you going to share your screen?
If you have that capability, better. Thanks. Awesome.
If you want us to put up the, go to the last page, put up the drone photos, that would be great. So the existing building is located on the corner of Pleasant and Court Street. It's known as the Treadwell Jensen Mansion. As I understand it, before the fire of 1813, the William Brewster Tavern and Boarding House stood on the corner of Pleasant and Court Street. The present federal-style brick building was constructed in 1818 by the widow of a wealthy sea captain and merchant named Robert Treadwell. Through marriage, the mansion passed to Dennis family in, around 1829, where the family resided for over 70 years. It was a mansion. Before being converted into the Merrick Hotel, and then eventually the building was used by the Elks Club. The 1910 Sanborn Insurance Map indicated it as the Elks Club with the kitchen and service wing out back. There was also a separate building that was indicated as a bowling alley. In later years, it was sold at auction to a group of developers around 1990. From 1992 to last year, Northeast Auctions used the property. Then Mark bought the property. Currently, the building is unused, except for the parking lot in the rear, off of Court Street. The area is bounded by a stone retaining wall along the sidewalk into the east, and there's also stone retaining wall along the north proper line as well. So as indicated earlier, I wanted to touch on a couple of the master plan goals that will, that this project will help to address. Master Plan Goal 1.1 talks about continuing the vitality of the urban core. And then underneath that, 1.1.1, support reinvestment in unrealized buildings and land. This project will help support that goal by obviously renovating and modernizing the existing building to meet energy and life safety codes. This building currently does not have any building sprinklers in it, and obviously this project will add that. The exterior will be repaired as needed while maintaining the historic façades. The concrete block addition that's off the back, you can see there, as well as the stair building on the south, will also be, they're not original to the building, obviously, and will be, will be removed. In fact, if I, the Elks, I think, used to have a bar in the basement, and that stair was actually used as one way to get out. The rear lot will be upgraded to obviously hide the parking below grade. And obviously, we're providing housing options, and our plan is also to incorporate the existing stone wall into the design. In addition, our new entrance will provide ADA accessibility to the existing building, which doesn't really currently have it. The prominence of the existing building will be maintained. Master Plan Goal 3.2 talks about obviously accommodating housing needs of the community. Underneath that, 3.2.5 encourages specifically smaller housing needs, such as micro units. And the master plan mentions that about 39% of residents are single household, and I believe that information's been probably related to you in other projects. For the record, zoning defines units that are less than 400 square feet as micro units. Parking requirements are based on units that are less than 500 square feet, between 500 and 750 square feet or over 750 square feet. The civil package used micro units as a general term, and I just wanted to clarify what those sizes actually were. This does not affect our parking requirements. The proposed project, and actually, John, if you want to go to the second floor? Obviously, this project will support this master plan goal by, you know, obviously providing affordable housing units. And like Mark mentioned, these units are furnished and utilities are included into rent. Each individual unit does not have a laundry, but there are laundry rooms in the building. Includes a total of 61 apartments. The breakdown is micro units per zoning, which is units less than 400 square feet, there are 41 of those. Dwelling units that are less than 500, which basically are still a micro unit for all intensive purposes. We have 18 of those. Six of those are actually small one-bedrooms. And then when you, we only have two that are greater than 500 square feet, and those are each one-bedroom, and both of those are actually in the existing building on the upper floors. So that's basically a total of 53 units that are basically micro units, and then eight which are one-bedroom units. But none of them are over 750 square feet, and most are less than 500. Obviously, the downtown location promotes walkability and reduces reliance on automobiles, and the building massing and facade will be human-scale. And then the third master plan goal that I kind of wanted to touch on was Goal 3.3, just a couple items underneath there. Identify flexible low-cost locations for business startups. Identify appropriate locations for neighborhood commercial areas. This proposed project will help that. If you actually want to go to the first floor, John? We'll be providing a couple of small office areas in this building on the main level of the existing building, as well as in the lower-level space. That basement space actually has windows in it along the south side. And obviously, smaller spaces are more conducive to allowing startups to be able to start. And obviously, they'd be Um, and obviously, they'd be right downtown, which is always a, a, a good amenity to have. And obviously, being downtown promotes walkability. Um, in addition, uh, to those master plan goals, uh, we're going to be, I like to, we have the following sustainability elements that we'll be including. Uh, we plan to have a rooftop solar ray. Uh, electric car charging stations will be in the below-grade garage. Uh, we'll have plenty of space for ma-, uh, wall-mounted bike storage below grade. Um, we're also planning to adjust some of the parking so that we have space for electric bikes and scooters in the garage as well. The addition will meet or exceed the current energy code, and, and obviously, the existing building, uh, will be upgraded on the inside as well to help with energy efficiency. So, uh, those are some of the reasons I'm very excited about this project. This is to reiterate, you know, affordable housing options, human scale, walkability, and connection to downtown, as well as, uh, you know, reviving an under-realized building and lot. So thank you for listening, and I will turn the presentation over to John, who's our civil engineer.
Thank you, Chris. So I just wanted to go through the site plan package and show you some of the elements therein. Uh, the cover sheet has the, uh, team on the top left, the zoning block, uh, a location map and, uh, indexing of the sheets. We have in the set a standard boundary survey of the site and existing conditions plan. And then we have a demolition plan. And the demolition plan shows what Chris mentioned earlier. There are two small areas of the site, of the site's existing building that will be removed. So some minor demolition, but otherwise keeping that building in the front intact. This is the site layout. The, uh, building attaches to the existing building and runs in the area that was that, uh, raised parking level. The stone wall that's along Court Street, and then it does travel a bit along the abutting property to the east. That will be taken down and stored and then, uh, reassembled partially as some of the facade of the new building. So it will re-, maintain that sort of look that it has now with that feature. There is a new pedestrian entrance that, uh, is taking over the space that was the driveway entrance, infilling the sidewalk, providing bike racks. There's the vehicle entrance is on the east side of, of Court Street, and that goes to a, uh, lower level parking area. It's not, uh, it, it slopes as it goes to the west. It's, uh, uh, fully articulated at the, at the west end, but it starts out closer to grade for ease of access in. The impervious surface has been carefully targeted to be consistent with what's there now. We also have a zoning standards table on this page. Looking at the parking level plan, as I mentioned, on the east side is the entrance, and then the cars will turn. And we show, I think it's worth, uh... There we go. Raising this up a bit in size, maybe too much. Hopefully, that's easier to see. Uh, there are twenty-four parking spaces shown in this exhibit. And based on some additional work with the team and some thoughts, we'll probably be dedicating this area over here, removing the twenty-fourth spot and turning that over to, as Chris mentioned, uh, electric, uh, bikes and mopeds uh, and other, um, forms of transportation. So the tenants will drive in, and there are, uh, parking spots at that lower level. There'll be twenty-four. This sheet shows the conditional use permit requirements. Uh, there, uh, it is slightly inaccurate in that it says there's fifty-nine micro units, but the, uh, there are some units between four hundred and five hundred square feet. So there are fifty-nine units under five hundred square feet, which are a half a space per unit. And then, uh, two units, yeah, that require one space per unit, plus the visitor spaces yielding forty-four, uh, required under the ordinance. In the downtown overlay district where the project is located, there is a four-space reduction. So forty spaces are required, and we'll be providing twenty-three. The next sheet in the set is the utility plan. Oops, sorry. And the utility plan, um, shows the connections. We are coming in at street level for all of the utilities. We're providing a space on the site, which is shown here. Uh, detail of the blow-up of this area. So we're able to provide a space for a transformer on site, which is a huge benefit in the downtown. Uh, we're trying to get rid of as many overhead lines as possible, so this will help in that endeavor. And we'll feed through a loop to that transformer. The transformer will be located where one of those additions was taken out, the minor one-story addition. And we have, uh, gas service from Court Street, sewer service, and drainage will connect to Court Street. And those are the utilities we're planning. Terrence Parker will go over the landscaping. And then we have the architectural plans in the set and the usual detail sheets. Just one thing before I turn it over to Terrence. The drainage, um, is going to be roof drains that will connect to the drainage system through some gutters. And we're looking at a treatment of roof runoff, which will occur in the roof gutter, in the vertical section of pipe. Uh, and I believe I submitted some information on that type of system in your packet. So I guess I'll turn it over to Terrence, uh, Parker. He can talk about the landscaping.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Uh, Terrence Parker, TerraFirma Landscape Architecture. So, John, if you want to just point to the, the, the Pleasant Street, uh, landscape in the front there, we'll start there and then move down Court Street and then over to the back, John. Thank you. So because this is a historic home, it has, uh, what I planned for the landscape was kind of a classic, uh, you know, revegetation of the, the, the foreground of the building with, uh, plants that are typically used in, uh, historic gardens. So there's rows of boxwoods, there's rows of lavenders, there's, uh, there's asters, um, there's, uh, peony, uh, there's some rhododendron, and there's some new street trees, but they're small street trees. Uh, they're amalanchier, sometimes called shad or service berry. They, they were the classic, uh, harbinger of spring back in the day before, uh, when, when people still used strictly native plants. So they're on either, they're on the corner by the Clipper Tavern up there and down again by the corner of Court and Pleasant. So you can see that the, the, the planting is a plint of green, and that's really just on the embankment, um, that slopes down from the front door landing to the bottom of the steps. So it's, it's kind of the width of the steps. And then there's some solid lawn paths, uh, that goes from, uh, the Clipper Tavern all the way to, um, again, the corner of, uh, Pleasant and Court. So the flagpole is moved from that, the, the corner of Pleasant and Court over to the middle of the lawn there. That's correct. Uh, so that'll still be in place. Um, and then John has pointed out where the transformer is going to go. So there's, um, probably going to be some, um, tall viburnum shrubs there that also have, you know, flower leaf and a really great berry. And then there's another swath of lawn as you head toward the main entrance into the new apartment complex. There'll be bike racks on the left. Uh, the gas units, uh, the gas meters will be screened by some evergreen screens. And then there's a narrow, uh, narrow, uh, deciduous tree on that corner to work with the, the scale of the building. And so on the back, uh, wherever there's, uh, the, the tall, narrow building, uh, the window columns for all of the units, um, placing, uh, columnar oak trees. Uh, my feeling is there that, um, the occupants of both the abutter and the new residents would rather look, uh, right into a, a really beautiful tree than out to their neighbors. So that will filter the view. It's on the north side, so they're not getting any direct, uh, it's on the west, north and west side. So, um, I think, so that those columnar trees will, uh, shield the view to and from the buildings, and then there'll be a ground cover of, um, probably fern and sedge under that. So, um, that covers my presentation. So if, if there's any, any questions, I'll be glad to, uh, answer them a little later. Thank you.
I think that concludes our presentation. Uh, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, I guess we're here to get the planning board's feedback on what we've presented, and, um, so we, we look forward to your input.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, questions, comments, or feedback to the project team? Uh, Mr. Gamester?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John or anyone on the team, but, but, uh, John, I was, I was looking at where you have, uh, where the trash is sited within the building and, and seeing how Court Street's kind of a, kind of a tight street with that many units, what, what would be the, the, the trash plan, um, trash recycling? For trash day specifically, obviously.
Yeah, I can take that unless Chris wants to jump in. But, uh, there's a trash chute that's planned, and then there would be a trash compactor that would then, uh, allow unloading here. And, uh, the frequency of pickup. So if somebody would drive into the building to pick up the trash, and the, and the frequency of pickup would be matched to the available capacity. It, it could quite possibly be every other day.
Okay.
Every three days, uh, as they get into it.
Yeah, typically what happens is it's a small container, um, and it's usually a little electric, uh, dumpster caddy. You're able to pull that out to where the garage door is. Pull it out to the sidewalk, so when the truck comes, it can pick it up there, and then you bring up the empty one back in.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, feedback? Uh, Vice Chair Moreau?
Um, I just would like to mostly make some comments about the project. I think it's a really well-thought-out and, uh, good project. I, most of my questions were answered when Mr. McNabb spoke. That really gave me a lot of the information I really was looking for regarding the units and what makes them affordable, so thank you for giving us that information. I appreciate the fact you are giving us some parking. It may not be all the parking our zoning requires, but based off of the setup of the units, um, it's appreciated that there is, uh, a, a fair amount of parking available and alternative bike and moped and other types of, uh, commodities on, on top of the fact that it is downtown. So it's also very close to a bus stop. Um, I really appreciate the fact that the newer building, from the actual view of the historic building, will actually be somewhat hidden. It's, if you really are still looking at the historic building, I don't think you're really even going to know that the other building's behind it until you round the corner. Um, I think you've thought of a lot of the things, uh, that are much appreciated, and honestly, I, I just like the project.
Other, other comments or feedback? Um, Mr. Clark?
Corey, we can't hear you.
How about now?
Now we, you're crystal clear.
Okay, good. Sorry about that.
No worries.
So, uh, first off, I, you know, I think the sustainability that you're doing with this project is fantastic with the, um, the electric charging and the, the solar incorporated into it. I do have a, just a couple of questions. Um, now, I know those sidewalks on Court Street are really tight, and it does get a fair amount of traffic, of people trying to, you know, kind of bypass the downtown district. So, uh, can you kind of walk me through, um, how that's going to be with the garage and vehicles coming up and down through the ramp? And does the ramp start right at the sidewalk? It looks like it starts a little ways back, but, um, yeah, so I'm curious on that aspect.
But I guess, I guess I could start, John, and you can always jump in. We are planning to have identification lights, so, uh, because it's only a, it's a, you know, one car with locked drive lane. So residents will know, uh, by a light on the outside where somebody's actually coming out, so they, they don't have, you don't have, uh, traffic issues there. We did cut away part of the building so that when you exit, you'll be able to see down towards the east part of Court Street. Um, in addition to that, uh, though we haven't actually shown anything here yet because we're developing it, is we'll probably have something like, uh, either, um, uh, mirror or something like that, so that when the car is actually exiting, you'll be able to see anybody's approaching on that sidewalk.
Okay, so, but at this time, you guys don't plan on having any sort of, I don't know, light on the outside of the building or anything like that to notify pedestrians?
Uh, yes, we probably will do that.
Okay, okay, great. And then my other question was, you know, due to the very historic nature of this site, what, what it's the, um, can you guys walk us through the archaeological review process for the site? Um, seeing that, you know, there's going to be basically a pretty large excavation occurring out here?
Maybe speak a little bit to that. Um, the size of the lot has no requirement from the state. Uh, we have done borings, um, on the site, and the reason that parking lot is elevated that height is it's solid ledge. Our, um, drilling that we've done, we hit ledge between twelve inches and, I think, three feet down. Um, so we're not expecting to find anything because there's really no soil there. Um, John, is that, um, John Shagnon, is that pretty much what you believe as well?
Yeah, that's, uh, I haven't, uh, seen your logs, but certainly if that's the case, then, then you would expect that there's not going to be a whole lot of archaeological interest there.
It was, it was, it's just a solid piece of ledge. We've had main drilling and blasting out there, and we've done, uh, we've done borings.
I think the two parts of the existing building that are coming down, and, and Chris, you, you probably know better than I, but I don't think those are historic. They, they're not, uh, part of the original structure.
And we would, we would, we would certainly follow, and we would put it on the prints if they're not. Uh, John Shagnon put it on the prints if they're not to say, you know, any, any archaeological, um, you know, found, we would, we would get somebody involved and not, not disturb that. But we, we're not expecting to find anything because, because there's just not any basements here. There wasn't anything subterranean.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Hinkle?
Um, thank you. Uh, I, 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 you know, echo, uh, Chair, Vice Chair Moreau's comments. I think this is a great project. I'm just wondering, have you given any thought to, these are really great units, they're fully furnished, someone moves in, so say someone, you know, meets somebody, they move in with their boyfriend, and what if they want to rent it out as an Airbnb? I mean, it's like, it's all furnished, are you going to do anything like to restrict that in their lease? Anything like that? Just...
It's an excellent question. Um, and those are the things that enter in, uh, apartments, those type of behavioral things. Yes, that's all prohibited. Uh, their only lease, nothing would be sold, so nobody could do that as an owner, you know? Uh, the rights an owner could have. And these units will have, uh, there'll be a full-time, um, employee at McNapp Properties that will live in these units, just like you responsibly need when you run a, a dorm at a college or, you know, other, uh, low-density housing, just to make sure you don't, that they're set right, um, and you don't have bad behavior. Um, so that won't be tolerated. Um, any of you who know my buildings downtown, we just... So that won't be tolerated. Any of you who know my buildings downtown, we just, we run a tight ship on all that kind of stuff. So no, you can't do it. We won't allow it, and...
Just because then that would kind of, you know, then it's no longer, you know, workforce housing, that's all. You lose a unit. So that's great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Other comments or feedback? Mr. Harris.
Hey, thank you. Great project. I think it's got a lot of merits to it and everything that, between Corey and Elizabeth Moreau said, really think it's awesome. I do have some questions. Actually, pursuant to the question about a tenant moving in that was just asked, what if that person moves, does move in and they have a car? And the, how, how do you see, and the spaces are all taken? How do you handle tenants that have more cars than you have spaces?
The, you know, the, how we manage that is part unknown at this time. If we're going to give a specific assignment or have a free-for-all. The reason why, why we wouldn't want a free-for-all is we are renting to people that, most of them won't have cars. That's really what we're after. And we just wouldn't want that activity of people pulling in the garage, the busyness of, is there space or not? So let's say that it doesn't turn out that way. Let's say that, that there's, of the sixty units, there's forty people with a car. It wouldn't be good for us, it wouldn't be good for the city to have forty people pull in there and then not find a thing and back out and go back out. So it will somehow be limited, so that doesn't occur in the garage, either through assigned spaces or shared assigned spaces. So that when you rent, somebody that wouldn't have a space, and if they had a car, there could be a rent break, but they just wouldn't have a space. So they won't be done where you can park anywhere and anybody can have a car. You'll either have an assigned space, or you'll be renting a unit without the space.
Have, can I continue on the part of you?
Yeah, follow, follow on, Peter.
Is it typical in other cities where microunits, there's some type of ride-sharing, like Zipcar involved with the partnership?
I mean, you know, you see all kinds of stuff in Europe, which is, you know, I'd love to see, you know, things catch on here. You know, I'm not, I'm not aware of any in, you know, in New England, per se. You know, the Zipcar and all that, we just see quite a bit in Europe. We're really after the walking, the biking, the mopeds. And we're really not after the market for cars. We believe there's a demand for that. I know, I know we do internally, for my own company even. We have a number of people that would love to live in something like this without a car. There's a lot of people that don't have driver's licenses and don't have cars. And I'm actually kind of amazed how many even young people are choosing not to have cars. So we, we're really after the market that, you know, that has a hard time affording a car. So we don't really have the programming for, you know, conventional twenty-five-hundred-dollar-a-month apartment that has a parking space. We don't believe that will be our, the person that would rent here. The actual modes, though, of transportation, you know, albeit Zipcars, albeit electric cars, which will park themselves somewhere. You know, the autonomous cars are not far away at all. Somebody said, you know, the electric charging stations, you know, they felt it was a, it was, didn't fit like affordable housing, but we believe it does because, you know, I think ten years from now, it's going to be hard to buy a combustible engine car. You know, we're just going all electric. So everybody, affordable, and, you know, it's not just, doesn't mean you have a Tesla, an electric car. So I think the modes of transportation are going to change quite a bit, quite rapidly. You know, albeit autonomous cars or, you know. I see that being, I see that being a big change.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Other comments, questions?
I have one more question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Peter.
Who could ask, who's using the parking that's there today? Is that other businesses downtown, the rented spaces or?
We rented to the abutters behind. We've allowed, and I think there's only four spaces. And the rest are my workers from Sixty Penhallow, the site under construction, some workers from Three Pleasant, some workers from Soul, which has got some work going on. So we use it as a construction lot right now.
Okay, because they're going to be displaced?
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be in our new parking garage before they get displaced from this. So we're, you know, as soon as we get Sixty Penhallow in the late summer, September range, the garage open in there, we'll have seventy spaces in site, on site. We'll be, we'll be parking that construction site on the premise.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thanks, Peter. Other feedback, comments, questions? So aside from the CUP, I guess, John, do you anticipate needing any waivers or anything like that, or is it too soon to say?
It may be too soon to say, but I don't think we'll need any variances or waivers at this point.
Okay. I mean, clearly it may be too soon, so I won't, I won't hold you to that. And just a comment, and it's kind of universal from this board. The project is terrific. The concept is terrific. I'm really excited about it. I think we all are. What I would ask is when you put your formal proposal together, if you could somehow include Mark's nine criteria for microunits. Because it was kind of a tour de force, Mark, for me, and it sort of educated me about microunits, in a sense, they really are new to Portsmouth. And I've had a lot of people ask questions about them. I wasn't always prepared to answer them, so having that documentation would be helpful. I mean, for the community as well as for the board. So I'd ask you to include that in your presentation. And then I guess the last thing I'd say, and our governor mentioned this the other day, I think, when you were speaking, I think it was before the chamber. I mean, I'll paraphrase him. You can't, you can't say you support business if you don't support affordable housing. And this is so necessary for Portsmouth and for the, for the workers who work in Portsmouth. And we can't keep saying that we support affordable housing, but not here or not there. And so your nine criteria helped to solidify the reason why this is, this is a perfect site to provide this. So thank you for conceiving it. If there aren't any other questions or comments, I'll just thank the presenters again and look forward to seeing your refined presentation when we meet again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
All right, thank you. Good night. So item seven, other business. Item A, the request for Amigos Alceona for property located at fourteen-hundred Lafayette Road, requesting a one-year extension of conditional use permit approval and site plan approval. If I could have a motion to grant a one-year extension of the conditional use permit and site plan review approval.
So moved.
Roll call, please, Ms. Walker.
Vice Chair Moreau.
Yes.
Mr. Gamester.
Yes.
Mr. Clark, and welcome.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Chellman.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Henkel.
Yes.
City Manager Conard.
Yes.
Mr. Pizzullo.
Yes.
And Chairman Lake.
Yes, the motion passes. Item B, City Council referral regarding Chevrolet Avenue easements. Planning Director Walker, do you want to give us a summary of this?
Yes, the city is doing a sidewalk project on Chevrolet Avenue. And as part of that project, we've been, well, the city, not me personally, has been working with the owner of the malt house exchange property to do a, basically a swap to make sure that we have sufficient room for the sidewalks. And basically, it's a trade. So as per city practice, we, city council approval is ultimately needed, but any, any exchange or acquisition or release of interest in land comes before the planning board for review. And you have the plans in your packet. If you want me to share that, I'm happy to do that. But it's a pretty simple plan, just showing the location of the easements to be released and as well as the easement to be acquired.
Questions for Juliette? Mr. Clark?
Just real quick, Juliette, I know the new apartments, there was a, and I don't think this has anything to do with it, but I'm just, just double-checking. I believe the new apartments across the street on Chevrolet Avenue had a community space. This isn't tying into that community space or in any shape or form, correct? This is just going up to the...
Right, good question. No, it's not impacting the community space.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I guess. I'm a little disappointed with that community space out there, but, so I was just curious if we're trying to enhance.
The natural, the natural area?
The area across the street, yeah, so.
I agree with you. I think, you know, because there was insistence on keeping it as it was, it's, it's meant that it's now, it doesn't look that great. It looks okay on the outskirts, but back behind there, it's sort of a little bit of a trash collection area. So I noticed that the other day, too. We'll follow up, but it was, part of the condition was that it basically stayed natural, which was a little bit problematic because it means that no real cleanup was done. So we can, we can follow up with the Chinburg Properties folks and try to work something out there.
All right. Corey, to your point, it really, I think we, I think we probably made a mistake as a board on not figuring out a way of improving that area. I don't know how much flexibility we had, but I think that was a concern from the get-go is that the idea of leaving that in a natural state, it was just run down to begin with. And it's hardly inviting for anybody. So, yeah, to the extent that the city may be able to work with, with the Chinburg Properties to see if they may be able to clean that up in some way that would make it more inviting, would be nice. Ms. Moreau?
They were actually supposed to put in some new plantings in there as well, which I don't think those have happened. So that's certainly within our purview and control to find out about that.
Yeah.
I'm happy to follow up. They do have some planting along the road that they did do, but I'm happy to, happy to check into that.
Okay, thanks.
Great.
Anything else before I call a motion? I've straightened a motion to recommend that the city council approve the proposed easements.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Vice Chair Moreau.
I think it's a great addition to that area.
Much, much needed. Call a motion, Ms. Walker?
Vice Chair Moreau.
Yes.
Mr. Gamester.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Chellman.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Henkel.
Yes.
City Manager Conard.
Yes.
Mr. Pizzullo.
Yes.
And Chairman Lake.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Anything else to come before this board this evening? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Done.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Moreau.
Yes.
Mr. Gamester.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Chellman.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Henkel.
Yes.
City Manager Conard.
Yes.
Mr. Pizzullo.
Yes.
And Chairman Lake.
Yes, motion passes. Thanks, everybody, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Good night.